The bargaining agreement with the building trades unions.
Again, without objection on consent, item number three.
Item number three, a resolution authorizing the lease of office space for Congressman Tonko's Schenectady office.
Without objection on consent, item number four.
Item number four, a resolution approving the 2015 downtown special assessment district budget.
Mr. Riggi, roll call. Okay, item number five.
Item number five, a resolution authorizing the issuance of revocable permit, number 588.
Discussed in committee, without objection on consent, item number six.
Item number six, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a tax surstrary brought by Car Care Enterprises LTD.
Also discussed in claims, without objection on consent, item number seven.
Item number seven, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a tax surstrary brought by Stockade Self-Service Car Watch.
Also discussed in claims, without objection on consent, item number eight.
Item number eight, a resolution authorizing the sale of 1605 Foster Avenue.
Also discussed in claims, without objection on consent, item number nine.
Item number nine, a resolution honoring Trusco Bank for the Quackin Bush Park improvements.
Okay, this will be taken out of order, Ms. Porterfield will present that. Item number 10.
Item number 10, a resolution honoring Winifred L. Louise Warlock.
This will also be taken out of order, Ms. Perazzo will present that. Item number 11.
Item number 11, under contract and supply, a resolution awarding a bid for building demolition and debris removal.
Also discussed in committee, without objection on consent, item number 12.
Item number 12, a resolution amending resolution 2014-CS-18.
Also discussed in committee, without objection on consent, item number 13.
Item number 13, a resolution amending resolution 2014-C3-19.
Also discussed in committee, without objection on consent, item number 14.
Item number 14, a resolution awarding a bid for fire department vehicles to Steuben Corporation.
Also discussed in committee, without objection on consent, item number 15. These items were items discussed, yes, in the claims committee meeting tonight.
Item number 15, a resolution authorizing the transfer of 848 Stanley Street.
Okay, discussed in claims, without objection on consent, item number 16.
Item number 16, a resolution authorizing the transfer of 972 Albany Street.
Also discussed in claims, without objection on consent, item number 17.
Item number 17, a resolution authorizing the transfer of 1317 Eighth Avenue.
Also discussed in claims, without objection on consent, item number 18 is being referred back to committee, item number 19.
Item number 19, a resolution authorizing the transfer of 1192 Parkwood Boulevard.
Again, without objection on consent, item number 20?
Yes. A resolution authorizing the transfer of 12 Harvard Street.
Also discussed in claims, without objection on consent, and then we have two items to be approved by unanimous consent, item number 14A.
Item number 14A, a resolution authorizing the transfer of six properties.
All right, this is for demolition, Mr. Mutiveren, you move it?
Yes.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Kozier, all in favor, aye, then to move it to the consent agenda, okay, Mr. Mutiveren, Ms. Perazzo, all in favor, aye, okay, item number 14B.
Item number 14B, a resolution authorizing the implementation and funding in the first instance, 100 percent of the federal aid and state marshally, no shallies, program aid eligible cost of a transportation federal aid project and appropriating funds therefore.
This is strictly clarifying some of the written language that the state wants us to use, so I'll entertain a motion to move it to the agenda, Ms. Porterfield, seconded by Mr. Mutiveren, all in favor, aye, and then to move it to the consent agenda, okay, Mr. Mutiveren, seconded by Mrs. Porterfield, all in favor, aye. All right, if there's nothing else to come before the City Council Caucus, I will declare that meeting closed, and we will move into the regular City Council meeting for Monday, December 8, 2014. I'll ask you to rise for the invocation by Reverend Hawkstone.
Is this live? Yeah, okay. Okay. Let us gather together with one heart, calling each of us to our personal faith, our personal belief of how to be in the world with love, humility, compassion, and respect. We welcome the presence of all that is, and know we are all of one heart, one mind, one body, from the one source, regardless of how we call that source to us. Bless us as we gather here today in this sacred season of the coming of the light. Bless us as we meet to serve our community intent on doing good work. Bless us as we seek to represent fairly and well those who have given us this task, and to represent all members of our community, no matter their situation or circumstance, with respect and equality. Bless us as we gaze about this meeting space and see the incredible diversity of person, opinion, station, and cause. May we be many who come to speak with one voice. We seek blessings on the tasks before us, bless our efforts with clear insight, our deliberations with wisdom, bless our work with clarity and accuracy, bless our decisions with impartiality and respect. We ask the source of all that is to bring peace and justice to our community and to all communities across this great nation. May we be blessed in finding our way to embrace our diversity with joy and not sorrow, love and not hate, with laughter and not tears. Bless us that we may be one heart, one community, in peace and love. May our personal faiths and beliefs give us strength to act honestly, well, and justly in all matters before us this evening, may we act with grace and humility. May love abound, filling our hearts and spirits, words and deeds, amen.
I'll ask John Palamani to leave us in Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if the clerk would call the roll.
Ms. Perazzo?
Present.
Ms. Porterfield?
Here.
Mr. Ferrari?
Here.
Mr. Kozier?
Here.
Mr. Riggi?
Here.
Mr. Mutiveren?
Present.
Ms. King? Present. All right, we have one special presentation tonight, Kelly Gross from the SUNY School of Social Welfare is here to talk about the open enrollment of New York State health systems.
Thank you very much, thank you for the invitation to be here. I am Kelly, I am the Director of the University of Navigator Program, and our program helps individuals, families, and small businesses enroll in the New York State online marketplace. The thing that's unique about our program is that we help each individual who comes to us think about the healthcare choices that they need to make, the healthcare choices that they've made in the past, and the ones that they want to make in the future. And with that, we're able to walk them through each plan that's available in the marketplace, make some good decisions about their healthcare, and about the healthcare plan that they want to choose, as well as understand the tax credits that they might be eligible for. Our navigators are available seven days a week, during the day, in the evening, and on the weekends, to help individuals, families, and small businesses navigate the online marketplace, so that everyone can get enrolled in health insurance. We are available by calling 442-3854, as well as emailing us at navigator, N-A-V-I-G-A-T-O-R, at albany.edu. And we hope that people will give us a call and ask questions, let us help them figure out what would help them with their health insurance and their healthcare. Emma is going to, she is a navigator, she also speaks Spanish, so she's going to explain it in Spanish as well.
Hola, me llamo Emma Horvath y soy una navegador del programa Navigator de la Universidad de Albany. Estoy disponible durante la semana, incluso las noches y los fines de semana para ayudar a personas, familias, y pequeñas empresas a averiguar sobre sus opciones de seguros médicos y inscribirse en el mercado de seguros médicos de Nueva York. Podemos asistirles de una manera personalizada y gratuita para encontrar un plan de salud apropiado y económico, incluso médicos que es gratis o créditos fiscales. Ayudamos a la gente a evaluar sus servicios médicos actuales y lo que hace falta para mejorar. Por ejemplo, una pareja que va al médico rara vez seleccionaría algo diferente a lo que una familia con un hijo con asma. Estamos aquí para quitar los dudas y el estrés del proceso de solicitud de un seguro médico. Por favor, llámanos a 518-442-3854, o por correo electrónico a navigator, N-A-V-I-G-A-T-O-R, at albany.edu. Haremos una cita en Schenectady que sea oportunna para usted, gracias.
Thank you. Do you want to repeat the phone number and the email address again, just so folks can write that down?
Sure. Our phone number is 442-3854, and the email is navigator@albany.edu, so N-A-V-I-G-A-T-O-R, at albany.edu.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. It's a very nice service to provide. All right, we have two out-of-order resolutions. The first is recognizing Trusco Bank, Ms. Porterfield. I'll invite Mr. Bob Leonard to come forward. Come on inside the rail. How are you? Okay. You have the floor.
A resolution recognizing Trusco Bank's contribution to the improvement at Quackin Bush Park. Whereas the mayor, Gary R. McCarthy, is committed to the continued revitalization of Schenectady, not only in the downtown district, but in the communities and neighborhoods where we all live. And whereas in mid-November, Trusco Bank announced its intent to begin renovating and helping to maintain local parks, starting with Quackin Bush Park and Schenectady. And whereas immediately following, Trusco Bank committed $30,000 towards improvements at Quackin Bush Park, such as paving the basketball court, adding new benches and garbage cans, and installing a new sign. And whereas their efforts brought together numerous business persons, city officials, community volunteers, members of the Mount Pleasant Neighborhood Association, and local residents in order to demonstrate that by taking the time, by exerting the effort, and by making small investments, we can initiate great change. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor and city council do hereby pause in their deliberations to recognize the contributions of Trusco Bank for the improvements at Quackin Bush Park as recently unveiled on November 12, 2014, and thereby encourage residents and other area businesses to actively engage in their community.
Madam President, I move the resolution. All right, seconded by Mr. Mutiveren, all in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I'd just like to thank the mayor, he was very helpful in this process, it started, geez, almost a year ago, maybe nine months ago, and he really put us in the right direction, and hopefully we can keep going forward in more and more parks. It's a great project, thank you.
Good. Thank you again.
I'd just like to say, as Chair of Health and Rec, we look forward to the work in the other parks in the city, and thank you for all your work.
You're welcome. Okay, Ms. Perazzo. You have the floor.
This is a resolution honoring Winifred L. Warlock, LZ, excuse me, we pronounce the E. Whereas, at the age of nine, the young Winifred LZ began writing short stories, and by the age of 19, wrote her first novel. And whereas continuing her interest in the creative arts, she graduated with a degree in the dramatic arts from New York University, and acted for a year with the prestigious Trinity Square Repertory Company in Providence, Rhode Island. And whereas, she later married her husband, Robert Warlock, sitting right over there, shyly, and their careers brought them to Schenectady, where they lived and worked for the past 30 years, and also raised their three children. And whereas, Winifred LZ Warlock became a published author in 1995 with her debut novel, The Changeling Garden. And whereas, her literary career continues to flourish with the publication of her other books, including Threads, If Only, Tilled, Here, Kitty Kitty, Egg, The $83.20 Cat, The Borgia Prince, and The Ghost of Proctor's Theater, which is all true, right? Which adds luster to the beloved landmark. And whereas, her commitment to her craft involves sharing her talent through membership in the Hudson Valley Writers Guild and the Authors Guild, now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Gary R. McCarthy and the city council do hereby pause in their deliberations to recognize the achievements of Schenectady author Winifred LZ Warlock, and thereby shine a light on a resident whose work brings acclaim to our city. I'm honored to move this.
Okay, is there a second, Ms. Porterfield? All in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye. Yes.
Thank you very much, and I'm hoping that this sort of thing will bring attention to books, which tend to get neglected when people are thinking about doing things for the arts, partly because it's hard to know what to do for books. Thank you. Congratulations, I know I have several of your books. I believe some of your books are available in Proctors, too. Okay, good. And I'm sure at the Open Door as well. Good. Okay.
All right, we have one public hearing. The clerk would read that.
Public hearing regarding the Upper Union Street bid, 2015 budget.
I have no one signed up to speak to that, so I'm going to declare that public hearing closed, and we will move on to approval of the minutes from November 24, 2014. Mr. Kozier, seconded by Mr. Mutiveren, all in favor? Aye. Any communications or petitions?
Communications presented to the City Council for Monday, December 8, 2014, under official from the mayor, a list of appointments dated December 8, 2014. Under general, there are none, under petitions, there are none.
All right. Any committee reports? No. All right. We will move on then to privilege of the floor related to the legislative agenda, I have one person signed up, and that's Mary McLean.
With regard to number eight on tonight's agenda, that deals with the sale of property, I request that in the future, the sale price and name of the buyer also be listed on the agenda. I think it is important for taxpayers to know to whom the city is selling city-owned properties. We are told the intent of the sale is to put properties back on the tax rolls, but taxpayers have no assurances that those sales will bring more money to the city. The last time the city revealed the names of deadbeat taxpayers on open-stage media, there were as many as eight properties listed for one owner who hadn't paid taxes on any of them. At a neighborhood meeting, I asked the mayor if the city continues to sell city properties to people who owe back taxes on other properties. He said he didn't know. Such a practice is counterproductive. Item number two on tonight's agenda, contracts to give union employees a $4,000 yearly bonus if they waive their city medical insurance. In other words, if the city doesn't have to pay for an employee's coverage, the employee will receive a $4,000 yearly bonus for family plan. Rather than breathe a sigh of relief that the city does not have to add another expense, it is creating one by giving a bonus instead of coverage. The contract applies to couples who work for the city. Does that mean that the councilman who told us his wife is a nurse in the school system will be entitled to the bonus he is being asked to approve of tonight? In either case, they are not entitled to bonuses. Medical insurance coverage is bonus enough.
Please summarize.
...when it comes from the taxpayers, like the retirees who had their coverage abruptly taken away from them. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up, so I'm going to declare this portion of the meeting closed. We will move to approval of the legislative agenda. A motion to approve, Mr. Kozier, seconded by Ms. Perazzo, all in favor? Aye. And we have one roll call vote.
Item number four, a resolution approving the 2015 downtown special assessment district budget. Ms. Perazzo.
Yes, thank you. I will be voting aye for the passing of the DSIC budget. It's my understanding, or it's fact that they haven't raised their assessment in eight years, although the footprint of downtown is getting much, much larger, which is a wonderful thing. And so we want to increase services throughout the larger footprint of the city. I've gotten feedback, some positive, some negative, but I would say three-quarters to a quarter positive. So I do want to say that a lot of the feedback that I got came after the public hearing, and I think it's really important, and when people feel strongly or have an opinion for them, to come to the public hearing. That's a really important part of our process, and I just can't encourage people enough to come down and voice their opinion. But I think DSIC is doing a great job, and I know that, you know, increasing costs are difficult, but to run an organization for eight years with the cost of living increase is just amazing. So I vote aye to the increase, to the budget.
Ms. Porterfield.
Thank you. I will be voting aye as well, but, and just, I did have some concerns regarding the churches, and that their assessments would be increasing. And I had a discussion actually with the president of the board, and, but I never heard from any of the churches. Did hear from them after the fact, so I know that one of the things that we're going to be looking at is next year's budget, but I have to also say that it's important for us to hear ahead of time what the concerns are, or come to the public hearing, contact us individually, because I understand the churches, basically their income is from their parishioners, and so, you know, they're limited if their congregation changes and all of that. And I understand they use some of the services downtown, but I think that we could do something about making them exempt, or at least assessing them at a lower rate in consideration of next year's budget. So thank you, I do vote aye.
Mr. Ferrari.
I am also voting aye on the DSIC budget. Again, as Ms. Perazzo stated, that there hasn't been a budget increase in over eight years. They're doing absolutely marvelous work, and with the progression that we are continuing, it is important that we also give back to them. So I vote yes.
Mr. Kozier?
Yes.
Mr. Riggi?
Yes, thank you. I've had some concerns about this, about the tax increase, I realize that they haven't had an increase in many years, but a over 20 percent increase for over 200 people, I believe, is a little extensive. My concerns with the churches, some can't wait till next year to have relief. We have a church that sent us all an email that's running into $70,000 deficit this year. That's major. We can only pass the hat so many times, discretionary money has been shrinking and shrinking rapidly. I know in my own church, when sometimes there's a second collection, everybody doesn't put in, because I collect at times, because they can't. It isn't because they don't want to, it's because they can't, they don't have the money. And some, I've had phone calls and emails from people who don't feel they are getting a service wherever their place of business may be. So I agree with all the speakers, we need people to come to the public hearings. The people that called me, I said, I asked them to come to the public hearing. But since they didn't, I still can't just put it out of my mind that they don't have these concerns. They're concerned that there isn't enough transparency in this process, that's another concern that's come to me, and I just don't feel comfortable with supporting this the way things are. We can wait till next year, wait till next year, but we have churches that are in dire need of help right now, and they just can't afford to pay any more money, that's the bottom line. It's a service that's provided to the community, it's a very important service that they provide, that DSIC does great work, but some of the churches, like St. John's on the corner not terrace and union, I'm not quite sure what they get for their assessment, I don't know. I did ask the executive director for a list of all the churches, how much they're assessed, and what their assessment will be, if this budget passes, I didn't get an answer from that, and the deputy that came to the committee meeting said I should contact the assessors' department. The assessors' department unfortunately doesn't have a lot of knowledge about this DSIC assessment budget, that's another problem. They have to be more involved, I don't know why they're not, but they have to be more involved, because it is, it does come out of the assessors' department, the bills. It is a fee, I understand that, like sewer and water, I understand that, but, you know, we can conserve, maybe if somebody is using a lot of water, and if they're metered, they can conserve. It's just one of those things, I just don't feel comfortable in voting yes on this budget tonight, because I think there's too many questions that are unanswered, and too many people have those questions, because they brought them to me. They don't come to the rail, some people feel intimidated by coming to the rail, they may feel embarrassed by coming to the rail, that's saying they don't agree, but everybody doesn't agree with this. So with that, I, in good conscience, I have to vote no. Thank you.
Mr. Mutiveren? Ms. King?
For all the reasons stated, aye.
The motion carries, six to one.
Very good. All right, we will now move to privilege of the floor regarding city business. Mary McLean.
Neither the mayor nor city council has done anything to publicly stress the importance of clean city streets. For the past three years, the main streets of Schenectady have been perennially filthy. Downtown is free of litter because money is coming from the private sector to pay workers to clean it. The same thing is now happening on Eastern Avenue. Price Chopper has offered to pay individuals living on the street to clean the litter. It's working, the results are astounding. The positives are coming from the neighborhoods. Mount Pleasant residents have gone above and beyond the call of duty to improve their area. The mayor says the city built the tennis courts, but it was the Mount Pleasant residents who painted the neglected chain link fence, a big job. who painted the neglected chain link fence, a big job. The mayor says he wants to demolish the dilapidated ice source, but it was the Mount Pleasant residents who painted 70 fire hydrants in their neighborhoods. They even mowed the lawn and the park. This kind of work is the city's responsibility, not the homeowner. Mount Pleasant deserves all the things they asked for, please see to it that it happens. In my case, I have spent time on my knees planting flowers and pulling weeds in the island garden. I have bent over to pick up cigarette butts, 20 at a time, with the point of my scissors, for over five years, all summer long, on Sunday afternoon gratis, while at the other end of Knott Street, the businessman is allowed to earn a profit and run his business like a city dump. Someone finally picked the sod, picked up the sod that was laying on the sidewalk, but left the dirt. Mr. Mayor, you sent a crew to Buffalo. Now please send a crew to Knott Street and Van Raken Avenue to clean up that messy corner. I refuse to do it. I have been thrown off the ballot four times, and I've been passed over four times for a city council seat by both Democrats and Republicans.
Please summarize.
Just, it appears that council seats are for the chosen few. The rest of us have the green light to do all the grunt work in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Joy Hall.
I'm Joy Hall of Schenectady. We've got a big problem. Lower part of Liberty Street is bumpity bump, past Erie Boulevard, and land of terrace and up in that area is bumpity bump. Number two thing we've got, I've got to be concerned about is Ellis Hospital. They should have kept the emergency room over there, too, because a lot of people can't afford, and a lot of people are handicapped, and a lot of people don't have cars, and it's very bad. You gotta go a mile and a half more? It don't make sense. They should have kept it half and half, the, with Ellis and St. Clair's. That's what they should have done, because it'd been much better, and I think a little safer. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Anthony Carrada.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. What I'd like to talk about is, I don't know if you all saw in the opinion section of Sunday Gazette from November 30th, there's an article in there that's a big lie. Now, this is from a paper that used to be respectable. The article I'm referring to, I'll just read the headline here, crime rate down despite appearances. That's a lie. Now, we residents in the most, three most dangerous neighborhoods of the city, Mount Pleasant, Hamilton Hill, and Vale, know this is a lie. And the fact that we know it's a lie, we're just trying to make few city officials and councillors aware, and I know Mr. Riggi's been trying to say this constantly, is the fact that if crime was down, as much as city hall, city officials, and a police like us know, life in the three most dangerous neighborhoods would improve, it has not improved. And thing is that if crime was down, city Schenectady would get off, there's a cell office, three lessons found itself on. That hasn't happened. Thing is this, we residents in the most, three most dangerous neighborhoods, Mount Pleasant, Hamilton Hill, Vale, we are not fearing for our lives. Thing is that we have a problem with 911 and the cops. Mainly 911, as Mr. Burnett has said numerous times, call 911 for report crime. Okay, we do that. The operator or caller asks like a thousand and one questions just to get to what we want. When we get a cop car coming to the problem of crime in the neighborhoods, what happens? They arrive an hour, hour and a half, two hours later, but the victim could be sitting on the ground halfway conscious or dead, and the fact that the cops looked the other way, don't even report. The other problem we have with cops is this. One, we now have a problem with the good officers and the police officers that do the job. We have a problem with the bad apples, for ruining for the police officers who do the job. Thing is, something needs to be done, and we're making these city officials aware. Thing is that if the police don't force, don't do the job, what's going to have to happen is a couple of things. One, we residents are going to have to look out for our own selves and start helping our other residents, or something that city officials, city hall, and the police don't want. We're going to have to be vigilantes, like Clint Eastwood in Dirty Hero movies, or Charles Bronson, and the Death Wish movies. I know you officials don't want that to happen, something needs to start happening now.
Thank you. David D. Giorolamo. Close.
I'd like to start off by addressing the mayor, city council. You might have seen me downtown last week protesting about our local police department. I'm not out there bad mouthing the good cops, just a few that think they're above the law. You know our history here in Schenectady. You know what I'm out there saying, dirty cops. We've had a lot of dirty cops over the years, and we still have a few in our department that exist today, when they think they're above the law, they can do whatever they want. That's a dirty cop to me. I was arrested for beeping the horn. That's all I did Monday. A car stopped in the middle of the crosswalk to, I guess apparently asked for directions. I waited, it was nice, I beeped, the car didn't move. It had room to move over to the side, so I beeped two more times, just to have a police officer come over yelling at me, never say anything to the car in the crosswalk to move. License and registration. Now, I'm going to get a ticket for beeping the horn, so I start yelling out the window. I cannot believe I'm going to get a ticket for beeping the horn. You never said nothing to that vehicle still in the crosswalk to move, but you're going to ticket me. Well, next thing I know, get out of the vehicle, you're being arrested. And when I asked what the charge was, because I was blank, blank, blank. It's on audio. Now, the other day, I made a trip to see where these street cameras are, and there's one at State and Broadway, and there's one down in the parking lot. And we all know cameras don't lie, and if you review the cameras, you're going to see exactly what I'm talking about. I was behind that vehicle who was holding up traffic, and the Schenectady police officer never said anything to that vehicle. Now, on the other side of this, I've been harassed, my rights, freedom of speech have been violated. If you know anything about the HIPAA law, when I was being locked up, I was told I had to release this information, otherwise I would have charges, other charges brought against me. And come to find out, they're wrong. They're wrong. These police officers don't know HIPAA laws, I'm disabled, the way I was treated, I told them I had neuropathy.
Sir, I need you to summarize, please, your time is up.
All right, but I was threatened that if I didn't get in the back of the seat, I would have the door slammed on me. I mean, this is just totally uncalled for, and you're going to see me out there protesting, because I'd be willing to talk to you, Mayor, Chief of Police, and get, resolve all this. Remember, dirty cops bring lawsuits.
Your time is up, sir, thank you.
And we don't need that. They bring lawsuits to the city because of dirty anger.
Marva Isaacs.
Madam President, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I don't know if any one of you saw that article in the Gazette. It's a cartoon, and which everybody is upset about. It's Schenectady, it's calm, we don't have any problems. We already have problems that we don't need anymore. The article stated, remember, if you're, if you're outside and the police is out there, act black. What is acting black means? How should you act? We don't need any more problems. The Gazette needs to apologize, and I'm asking everybody that buy the Gazette to buy, cut the Gazette until they apologize. This is, we don't need any more problems. Schenectady don't have any problems, and we don't need anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony Benome.
Yesterday was 73 years that Pearl Harbor was bombed. Today was the start of World War II. 73 years ago, so I don't remember, I was three years old, but I do remember at Yate School crawling underneath desks in case there was bombs or stuff. And I remember my father saying, as I got older, that the GE and the Alco, they might be targets of people, you know, so. So, Madam Chair, I would like to have a minute of silence for the 2,400 people, service people and civilians who lost their lives in the bombing of Pearl Harbor, plus all other veterans who lost their lives, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Stefan Kruger.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. My name is Stefan Kruger, I'm from Roddy Empire Rescue, Justice for Schenectady AC Dogs. I've been coming here since July, and you will be surprised to know that I did not come here to point out deficiencies at the hold, or to criticize, I've actually came here to thank all of you. We've recently found out that the hold is working with a rescue, they've been extending straight hold times for dogs that, you know, had no other options. The one thing that I will point out is, you guys need to work with more rescues. They've taken over 40 dogs since July, there, all these rescues are just volunteer organizations, we live on donations, and you're overwhelming any single rescue with 40 dogs. So I would like to ask if we could work with some more rescues. Of course, there's still people, sorry, there's still people that want to have the volunteers in there, we would like to work on that, too. But I just wanted to come to thank you, Chief Alvo, Commissioner Bennett, the mayor, and the city council. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Patricia Smith.
Good evening, Madam President, Mr. Mayor and council members. Again, since the last council meeting, Mount Pleasant has had another incident, a drive-by shooting. Fortunately, only buildings were harmed in this violent act, though speaking from experience, it is still unsettling when your property suffers gunshot wounds. Someone once told me, shots fired is an indicator for a murder with bad aim. Michigan Avenue and surrounding streets are made up of mostly single-family owner-occupied homes. Many of these owners have still lived there for decades. Senior citizens want to live in their homes for as long as they can. Being driven out due to violence in these neighborhoods does not seem fair. Young families with children worry about what may happen if their children play outside. Moving's not an option, as most likely the price that they would receive for their home won't cover the cost of the mortgage or the move, and that is if they found someone to purchase their home. Others who have been there for many years, like myself, and call Mount Pleasant home, where am I to go? Again, that is if I can sell my home for a profit. Residents of Mount Pleasant have the right to be and feel safe in their neighborhoods and their homes. With this type of gun violence, our law enforcement officers are at a greater risk of being injured or worse. The city coffers cannot fund more officers, and taxes are already stretching retirees and young families' limited resources. Why are we seeing an influx of people who do not have socially acceptable behaviors ingrained in their attitudes? Why are these people from outside of our city finding our neighborhoods so attractive to come to? Programs that grant the county money to find housing for these individuals may not be such a good source of income as it appears. The cost of declining property values, law enforcement calls, many other issues, and most importantly, the cost of our lives. All of these issues, are they worth these programs? The residents of Mount Pleasant want a pleasant place to call home. Please, we're trying to reclaim our neighborhood, please work with us, not without us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Ann Soder.
Madam President, Mayor, City Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I don't live in Schenectady, but I do have property here. Both of my parents were raised in Schenectady. I have three issues. The first is, I'm not sure if the city has an ordinance concerning curbside basketball If you don't, I think you should. Some cities have implemented ordinances preventing them, prohibiting them, and if there is one, it needs to be enforced. Every time I have a broken window at my property, it costs me $60 to fix it. I had three this summer. The people who have the apparatus claim that it's the kids playing football in the street, not them. But basketball, curbside basketballs do not help, and the larger issue is the children that play in the street. My houses are on Summit, and the cars, I've seen cars race up and down Summit Avenue at, and this is not exaggerating, 50 miles an hour. It's, it's pretty scary, with the eight-year-olds and the 10-year-olds playing basketball in the street, and the car is zooming by. I took some pictures with my camera of that this summer, which leads me to my second issue. I also caught some photos of drug buys across the road from me. There is a house that's been there for, I mean, at least 20 years, and the people that live there, I'm cordial with them, I have a cordial relationship with them. It's hard for me to believe that they've been allowed to operate this situation for as long as they have. I can't believe that the people in the city don't, don't know it's there. They're not dangerous people, they, but they do illegal things, and that, the illegal activity brings a bad element to the street. I'm not saying that they need to be, you know, like raided and with guns and, you know, all that stuff, but they need to somehow, formally, unofficially, be politely asked to find another occupation, or be asked to move. I've been putting up with this for 20 years, I've spoken casually to various police officers about it, and, you know, get casual replies. It's taken me this long to come forward and please ask to get rid of this, 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 you know, I don't know what to say. They're, they're, they're average, normal-looking people, but they, they deal pot, and they've been doing it for a long, long time. And I guess my point is, I'm tired of it. The third issue, of course, is the tax situation. My houses are assessed for more than twice their fair market value. I've challenged my assessment several times, I get the same form letter in the mail stating that I haven't supplied enough information when I've hired Doreen Ross Agency, a longstanding business in Schenectady to do appraisals at a cost of $250 per house, and included that with my, my assessment challenge, and I find it highly insulting, first of all, to get a form letter, and kind of ridiculous. Now, all I can think is, what are you doing? I mean, what are you doing? I couldn't even give these houses away, I could never sell them for what they're assessed as and taxed at.
Please summarize, your time is up.
What are you doing? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Carol Johnson.
Good evening, thank you for, also for letting me speak this evening. I'm also with Roddy Empire Rescue, and I volunteer for some other rescue, local rescues in the area, and I think it's fair to say, and I mean this in the most respectful manner, truly, that the situation at the Schenectady Animal Hold was not always compassionate and kind, it was often cruel and inhumane, and I know it was not favorably viewed that some groups were willing to speak out and point out to this, but I think at the out and point out to this, but I think at the end of the day, we would all agree, even if not amicably, that the situation is better because people were willing to speak out and point out the problems. So, I too am here to thank you all for your efforts to improve the situation. I think there's still a great amount of work to be done, but I must say, I've heard other people talk about the compassionate nature, which some of the newer animal control officers are treating animals, which I think is not just favorite, well, it's better obviously for the animals, but also I think that speaks favorably to the city, particularly when these officers are bringing dogs to other locations. That looks much better for the city than how things had been happening. Two, I'm aware that you all are making an effort to update the website with missing dogs, lost dogs, found dogs, and also available dogs, which I think is a great thing. Obviously, that's a better outcome for the dogs. And also through the sharing of that webpage, I too have seen dogs that have been held for not the prior 72 hours, seven days, nine days, 10 days that was required by law, but there's some dogs on there that have been held for a much longer period of time, which also demonstrates your attempts to be more compassionate. So, I just wanted to let you know, since we were very vocal when we were less than thrilled with the situation, that we also recognize what you're doing. So, I think one of the things that I've heard tonight is just a message of community. You know, we are all a community of people that have to reside here together, whether on the planet, in the state, in the county, in the community. And if things got this much better with the help of the community and volunteers and rescues, it can only get better from here. So, I'm aware that you're working with some rescues. There's still groups that want to volunteer. You still have people that are willing to volunteer. And the progress you've made was not made just by the city. It was made by the community that wanted to help you. So, hopefully you all will be, continue to be responsive and consider letting more groups assist. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Vicky Hurwitz.
Good evening, Mayor McCarthy, President King, City Councilmembers. I'm Vicky Hurwitz. I'm a local community activist and I'm here to tell you about Job Matching Pathways, a project I'm doing with Councilwoman Marion Porterfield. The project is also in collaboration with Better Neighborhoods. The simple purpose of Job Matching Pathways is to help people find jobs. The service is free. We have an office in 920 Albany Street, which is in Hamilton Hill where the SEFCU branch is. The office hours are Tuesday, 10 to 4, Wednesday, 12 to 7, and Thursday, 10 to 4. The telephone number is 377-4516. No appointment is necessary during regular hours. Once again, that's Tuesday, 10 to 4, Wednesday, 12 to 7, and Thursday, 10 to 4. We are offering an individual, hands-on approach to helping people find jobs. We have a 60-question test to evaluate clients' areas of strengths, and then we match these strengths with types of jobs that would fit and then actual jobs that are available. We will also recommend and help clients link up to job training and educational opportunities for targeted career advancement. So, Ms. Porterfield and I would like to extend an invitation for everyone to come by, see the office, and if you are looking for work or would like to get a better or different job, come take advantage of this exciting new, community-based service. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleen Murez.
I think I'm probably the last person to speak, since I was the last one to get here, but good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. I am here just to invite you to this Saturday's City Holiday. It is an event that we put on for the last several years. It used to be called Downtown Schenectady Holiday Open House. We've now changed the name to City Holiday. And it's a really fun, family event. All the activities are free. We'll have horse-drawn carriage rides, face painting, all with inside City Hall. There's other community groups like the Schenectady Day Nursery, MYSI, that will do kids' crafts and activities that day. It's really a lot of fun. It's from 12 to 4, again, on Saturday, so I want to take the chance to invite you all. There's also some great partnerships we've had this year. We are partnering with the County Library. At 2:30, there's going to be a performance of Oliver Twist at the McChesney Room. There's also, in their new expansion in the kids' area, they're going to be doing crafts and activities. The Whitney Corner Bookstore will be doing a Dickens-stylized Christmas in their facility. And I learned today that Practors, with the coming of Elf, will be hosting free movies this Saturday and the next Saturday, but during this Saturday, they're going to be showing three different performances of the Polar Express on the main stage, so that's going to be really cool. And also in the GE Theater, there's a bunch of free movies throughout the day, starting with a really weird one that somehow has to do with Martians. Maybe Lisa can say more about it, but it's, so anyway, a really fun event. If anybody has kids or knows kids or would like to invite them, the flyers were all distributed to the City School District, but again, it's a really fun event. We even have musical performances by Notre Dame Bishop Gibbons students. And just come on down, bring your family, and enjoy the day and get some festive cheer. And of course, don't forget to shop and dine while you're down here in Downtown Schenectady. So, here, Ann, take that?
Thank you. All right, I have no one else signed up to speak on city business, so I'm going to declare that portion of the meeting closed. I do want to go back to the DSAD budget for a minute. I think I neglected to have anybody move that to the agenda before we voted, so I'd just like to go back. Okay, Mr. Kozier moves it. Okay, Mr. Mutavaren seconds it. All in favor? Aye. And let's redo the vote just to be safe. Want to do the roll call?
Yep. Ms. Barazo?
Aye.
Ms. Porterfield? Mr. Ferrari?
Aye.
Mr. Kozier?
Yes.
Mr. Riggi?
No.
Mr. Mutavaren?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Aye. Thank you. Okay, we will now move to miscellaneous business of the council. Ms. Porterfield.
Thank you.
Thank you. And first of all, I just wanted to follow up on what Vicky Hurwitz came up to talk about. We've only been doing this for a couple months active, but we've already, there have already been people who have come to us and have found employment. So, please come on because, you know, our goal is really to make sure that people are able to find employment based on their skills, abilities. The other thing I wanted to announce, that the Affirmative Action Advisory Board continues to meet. And on December 18, Thursday, next week from this Thursday, at 6:00 PM in Room 110, they're going to be doing an actual, a training on affirmative action. And it is open to the public, so anyone that's interested in that, please attend and, you know, find out what the rules and regulations are and anything else you know, especially if you're running a business and you want to make sure that you're meeting the goals. The other thing I just want to talk about is something that's kind of, it's kind of, it's all over the country and be, even though it's not affecting us locally, it's something I think that we all are hearing about on the news and it's something that needs to be discussed. And basically, it has to do with race and law enforcement in America. We haven't had anything happen here. That's absolutely true, but it doesn't mean it's not impacting our community in some way. On Mondays, I spend time with young women at Mount Pleasant Middle School in ages 13 to 14. And, you know, we talk to them about things that they're concerned about and what they want to talk about. And at that age, you know, you don't think it's things that are really major, but one young lady a couple of weeks ago said, well, you know, what do you want to talk about? And the first thing she said was that a 12-year-old boy got shot. Well, you know, how do you talk to a young child about something like that? When I was that age, I certainly, that was certainly not something that was, that concerned me because it didn't happen in my life, but it's happening in young people's lives today. There's been, the Friendship Baptist Church has already done two sessions a while ago, and the police chief was there regarding law enforcement interaction with the minority community. And also, there was a sorority that did that, and this was prior to all that's going on right now. And there was also a sorority that did that as well. So, this conversation was already taking place, but now I think it's more important than ever that we, as a community, begin to have a conversation about it. And just, you know, just, let's just talk about it. There needs to be some understanding. I think there needs to be a better relationship built between law enforcement and minority communities and communities of color. And I really thought all of these things before I even saw the editorial in the Gazette, for those of you that didn't see it on Saturday. I was truly upset by this. And it's really a no-joking matter. And what it says is, it's a father talking to his son, and both of them are portrayed as being African-American or people of color. That says, remember, if you're outside and the police stop you, try not to act black. There's really nothing funny about that at all whatsoever. And do we need to talk about it? Absolutely. But it does not need to be done in a mocking way, and that's how I see this. So, these groups that have done things before, I've already reached out to them for us to come together again and to talk, and to also invite a group that works with young boys, because whether we want to talk about it or not, it impacts our young people and we need to have a discussion about it. I strongly feel that and I will continue to move that forward. I would certainly want the city to be a part of that discussion, because the people that we're talking about live in our city. And it doesn't make sense to have things talked about out in the community, have things simmered and not just brought forward and talked about. Everybody needs to know where everybody stands. We've done this before. And I think there's been some good outcomes where people have been able to say to a police officer, why did you stop me? And what did you see? And the police officer is able to explain from his perspective what he sees. So, it becomes a better understanding. And so, I think it's really important, especially in light of what's happening here today in America. And it's, there's nothing wrong with talking and to making sure that everybody understands everybody else's position. And again, to not have it portrayed or put out there in a way that it was put out in the opinion page of the Gazette and then have negative reaction behind it, which I think deserves negative reaction. So, I wanted to be able to talk about that. I want us to move forward and to have a conversation about that. And it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter what your ethnicity is, if you're a person of color or not. This should be a concern for everyone. We've heard from someone tonight who had a concern that is not a person of color. So, let's just discuss our relationship with our law enforcement because we need them. I believe in law enforcement. I have family and friends in law enforcement. I honor them. I love them. And so, you know, we're all people. We just do different things for a living. So, I think that to have this discussion is extremely important and we should do that. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Mr., okay, Mr. Riggi, oops.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Those are some real good points that Ms. Porterfield brought out. I think anytime community relations can be improved, for whatever reason, talking is a great way to do it. That incident that Ms. Porterfield brought up, it was a 12-year-old that got shot because he had a gun that looked very real. And just a few months ago, we had two officers in the city of Schenectady who came upon the same situation. They were able to defuse it. And those guys really did a great job because I know Christmas is coming and people want to buy their kids toys. Some of these guns are very real-looking and people have to realize that an officer has no way of knowing whether it's a fake gun or if it's a real gun. But we did have two officers that put a good ending to that situation here in Schenectady. But relations is a big thing. Community relations is wonderful and I see our officers at a lot of neighborhood meetings, which is good. And there's also an initiative in, I think, St. Petersburg, Florida. It's called Stop, Walk and Talk. And they have an initiative there where officers in their patrol car for an hour or two a week, they stop their car, park it, and they walk around the neighborhood and talk to people. They jot down the information. They're getting any trouble spots, things like that. They log it into their database. And then when they have meetings, they talk about what they can do to alleviate these problems. I think that's a great initiative and maybe something we can look at in the future because it really is good, just to stop, talk and walk. I think it's a very, very good thing and it could certainly improve community relations. So, I think that's something good. Mayor, I hope you will look into that situation that this gentleman brought to us and see what went on there. And another thing that's come to my attention, and I know Albany, I think, called it last night, and I don't know if we have this in place or not, Code Blue. Do we have anything in place where people are, if there's homeless people out there and it gets very cold, do we have anything in place other than, maybe it's something, maybe it's an initiative we could pick up and have an announcement like that, you know, so people have an idea where to go. Some people don't. And I don't myself to direct people in the city mission to go if they need shelter. So, if we could maybe look into initiative like that, I think it'd be a good thing. Just one announcement. The Bellevue Preservation Incorporated will be sponsoring the 15th Annual Bellevue Community-Wide Christmas in Bellevue on Thursday, December 11th. Begin at 6:00 PM to light a tree and place a wreath at the George Westinghouse in Bellevue Veterans Park at Westinghouse Place. Immediately following this, we will proceed to St. Paul's Episcopal Church, 1911 Fairview Avenue, where we will light their tree, two trees, that's good, light their tree, then go inside. Of course, that tree's only about this big, but it's going to grow. And then go inside for reception, which will include entertainment and refreshments. They're also going to accept donations for the Mohawk Hudson Humane Society, such as canned cat and dog food, newspapers, peanut butter, cat litter, hand sanitizer, dog toys, et cetera. They will be accepted. So, all Bellevue residents, families and friends are invited and hope everybody on the council, I know we all got invitations, will show up. It's a nice event and it's been going on for a long time. With that, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Kozier?
Yep, thank you. One quick announcement as well. The Woodlawn Park Redevelopment Committee, together with, partnering with the Woodlawn Neighbor Association, just want to give you a save the date of our annual ZD and Meatball fundraiser dinner. It's going to be Tuesday, January 20. And this year, it's going to be at the Ancient Order of Hibernian Hall on State Street. It's our new location, a larger venue. And I believe we served well over 300 meals last year, I believe it was. So, again, it's a great, great community-wide event. And again, all proceeds go to the redevelopment of our Woodlawn Park, which the folks have just done a tremendous job over there. Again, with all our neighbor associations, as we said, Mount Pleasant, Bellevue, and everybody working together, just think it's wonderful for the city of Schenectady. And if I may, I just want the City Holiday as well. There is a website to continue, if you need any more details. It is downtownschenectady.com, downtownschenectady.com. It's a great event. I've done it for the last few years and always gotten a ride on the horse-drawn carriage. I think it's a good time for everybody. And we certainly, the weather looks to be okay by Saturday and hope folks will come out. And just one other thing regarding the union contract. The contract was for our Building Trades folks that we voted on today. It had nothing to do with our city council folks. And regarding the health insurance benefits, that was directed certainly to myself. I do not receive any of the benefits here from the city. I do not take the bonus waiver either. But I think that bonus waiver clause in there is very, very important for our employees. For those of us who realize the cost of health insurance, especially at the family end, is well in excess of $25,000. And we had several folks, again, speaking when I was on the county legislature when we first started this, we had several folks, spouses, who were taking insurances from both employers, not necessarily public employers or city. But it was a need for us to find that incentive for folks to get out of that and for us, the county, to save budget dollars. And again, that's really what the cost is here for the city. Again, looking for that $4,000 bonus, and that's on the family coverage. I believe it's only $2,000 for an individual. So, I think it's very important. It's a good clause. And again, I want to thank the Building Trades folks for approving the contract and of course, for the council as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. Councilman Porterfield, I agree with you and should always continue that discussion, not only because of the recent events, but just ongoing so that we are improving the relationship with law enforcement in the community and improving their effectiveness, where that they have, the citizens are really partners with them as opposed to creating sometimes those artificial barriers. Mr. Riggi, we don't declare, what other communities do, a Code Blue. Schenectady, where police and fire are all the time looking for people who might be in need of assistance. We do direct them to Bethesda House, to the city mission. And some of it is when you get those real cold days and then everybody focuses on it. But sometimes, the need occurs when it may not be as cold or people don't view the weather situation to be quite as extreme. But there may be people out there who are homeless and have other issues and so that they may need assistance in that fact pattern where it wouldn't be what would be considered in other communities, the full Code Blue. And having said that, I think the weather forecast is probably going to bring us a little bit of snow tomorrow going into Wednesday. Remind people to shovel, one shovel on each side of their fire hydrants. And after three inches of snow, we do go to the Priority Street Program where we will ticket and tow vehicles that are on those streets. Crews did a, really a great job in the last storm and expect them to get through whatever Mother Nature may give us in the next few days. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing else, so at this point, I'll undertake a motion to adjourn. Mr. Kozier, seconded by Mr. Riggi. All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.